Evening, everyone. Welcome to our April 13th. Luckily, it's not Friday the 13th. Twenty twenty-two. Plenty more meeting. Would you please rise for the pledge?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Dave, would you please take the roll call?
Board member Zeberto.
Present.
Board member Prince.
He's on Zoom.
He's here. Noted is here. Board member Mattis.
Here.
Board member McNamara.
Here.
Board member Garbino.
Here.
Board member Gannon.
Here.
And Chairman Curry.
Here. Thank you.
You're welcome.
First on our agenda is the minutes from March ninth, twenty twenty-two. We have the revised ones and there's, I'm sorry, there's just one other correction to make, and that is.
I just wanted to step.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Bruce. I thought he was making a comment. No? Bruce, were you making a comment?
Can't I be able to hear us?
Maybe can't hear us.
Looks like he's frozen because his jittery.
Okay. Oh, yeah.
You had an issue with the minutes?
No.
Yes, we have the correction.
I just know the one. Do you want to bring them both up?
It's a clerical error. It's town code section one fifty.
They played this afternoon.
On page one.
And did you have a second? Did you say? Did you say it was two?
Just one.
Oh, okay. Bruce, do you have something to say?
Quite a nice little role if they hadn't blown that leak the other night.
Yeah, I know.
Bruce, we started the meeting. Bruce.
Bruce is in another conversation. Maybe we can mute him until he can fix that.
I was not impressed with Lugo, both guests today, and I'm gonna mute him.
Yeah. Unless, unless everybody wants to hear his take on the game. It's up to you.
It sounds like he's critiquing the Mets, and this is.
That could be a while.
That could be a problem.
All right, so if there's no, so I make a motion that we approve the minutes with that correction?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. First then is our extension request from Granite Point, final subdivision approval for steep slopes, tree preservation, stormwater management, and erosion sediment control permits. And it's a re-grant of Route, and I'm sorry, it's Route one eighteen two oh two. This is a re-grant, a request for the nineteenth ninety-day time extension, and it would be from April twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, up to and including July twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, as per town code, town law, section two seventy-six, seven C, and town code, section one fifty dash thirteen M. And for the record, this property is located on the east side of Route one eighteen two oh two. It's located in the R forty zone. Anybody have any questions? As far as I know, it's really for peculiar circumstances, as we know. It's the lead removal, and that's what we're waiting for. Combination of government action and obviously in conjunction with the applicant.
And COVID.
And COVID, yeah.
Yeah, I think, didn't we get soil sample reports just recently on this?
Thirty thousand pages long.
Yeah, and there's a lot of other contaminants in the soil as well.
Correct. They rose to a level where they triggered that.
Yeah.
Right.
And this is right on the cusp of the Amawak, right?
Correct.
Where the DEP is, do we know, and we may not know, you may know, DEP did their mitigation already. We're waiting on the property assessment from DEC, the state?
The state, yes.
Yeah, that's my understanding, yes.
Yeah.
They've already done their abatement, yeah.
All right.
So I make a motion to re-grant the dates I just gave.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next is a project review for the New York City DEP wetland and water course protection permit for the application on the south side of Route one hundred in the vicinity of TM twenty. I'm assuming those are map coordinates, yeah. So would you guys like to come up, please? Yes, it's the application of aquatic herbicide copper sulfate and high threat for the blue-green algae control in the new Croton and Muskut reservoir wetlands with no physical disturbance under state permit.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. Appreciate you letting us come and speak today. My name is Dale Borkett. I'm a chief of process control with New York City DEP. And we do have a project where we're trying to get a hold of, get more control over the taste and odor issues that are resulting from some of the blue-green algies that we're seeing in the Croton system specifically. They've been coming a little bit more in these past two or three years than we've seen in quite a long time. Could be a climate change issue, where you're getting a little bit warmer water. But the blue-green algies come in, and as they, as they die off over the course of the year, they release these compounds called Jocelyn and two MIB are the other compounds. Those compounds make the water taste a little unpleasant. There's nothing, there's nothing wrong with the water. It's not a DOH requirement for us to do this, but it is something that the consumers, both down in the city and up here in Westchester who use our water, have expressed complaints about. So we're trying to get a little bit more control over it. The, the industry typically uses the herbicide called copper sulfate to attack the algae. And when you kill it all at one shot, it doesn't have the time to leach out these, these compounds that make the water taste a little funny. So we're looking to do that on, on new Croton, and new Croton and Muskut is why I'm before you tonight, needing your wetlands and water courses approval. But we're also looking to do it on Cross River and Croton Falls reservoirs over the next two years. Kind of a trial, a pilot project where we're going to be doing this and then evaluating, see if it worked, and then maybe continue it for one more year, see if it worked. And then after that, you know, we may be back before you, you know, for future endeavors as well. It, in New York State, the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation does not require a water supplier to obtain a permit for aquatic pesticide use for the use of copper sulfate on their water bodies. So we do not need a New York State DEC aquatic pesticide application permit. There is a general permit that we are also working with DEC on that allows us to do this. It's not granting a permit, but we notify them that we're going to be doing the work. And, and you know, we've already reached out to them, shared with them what we're going to do, and they've been accepting of it. One of the things that they pointed out were, and I think your consultant saw this as well, was we do have state wetland buffers around our reservoir, and we also have some eagle nests, not in Somers, but, but the next town over, there's a couple eagles nests. And we just need to make sure we stay out of the buffer zones when we're applying the pesticide. Any questions?
I was just gonna, Dave and Steve, if they would like to comment.
I have no comments.
Steve?
You can hear us? You can hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. Sorry, we had an issue where we couldn't hear you there earlier, so glad that's been resolved. Yeah, we did have just a few comments, just for, for the record and to understand what DEP was proposing. Dale, thank you for getting back to us so promptly after coming back from vacation. We appreciate your replies. And to summarize those replies, our concerns are really just around confirming how the pesticide was going to be applied, that there be appropriate notification of the permit holding fishermen in the area, because this is a chemical that, while commonly used in drinking water reservoirs, is harmful when handled as a, as a concentrated form and not diluted in the water. So just making sure from a public health and safety standpoint that that's been addressed, and I'm satisfied with DEP's reply on that. They did discuss buffer areas for both bald eagles and pied bull grebe, which is not in the Somers watershed or the Somers area right now. And, and so we have no further questions. This, from a drinking water perspective, is a commonly applied chemical. Everything that he said about the taste and odor complaints on the Croton system, we've seen with water suppliers in Westchester, whether they be Bedford or Croton or others that are on that system. So I think our questions and concerns have been addressed by DEP.
I have a question from a layman's and a sportsman's standpoint. Earlier in the year, or possibly latter part of last year, some of your colleagues were here to address a watermill foil issue in the reservoirs. Is the herbicide that you're using the same chemical? And if it's not, will it have any impact on the watermill foil? Should there be population in the Croton and Muskut that have not been addressed yet?
Right, good, good question. And that's where, for the, the watermill foil, they're looking at something called Hydrella, and it grows up, you know, along the banks of the reservoir. And the chemical that they, I think you've already granted them a permit to use Floridone is the chemical that is specifically just for that particular thing. It's a different type of application. On the Floridone, it's a, it's a granular thing that sinks to the bottom, and it sits on the roots, and it stays very localized, and it attacks the roots of that Hydrella. The algae is floating up in the top six feet of the water, so the copper sulfate dissolves in the water and then, and then attacks the algae. They do not, they do not counter each other. They do not affect each other, the two different chemicals. So it's, it's two different chemicals attacking two different issues, two different types of nuisance vegetative growth in the reservoir.
All right, and then from a sportsman's standpoint, I've seen populations of crayfish in, in these bodies of water that you intend to treat. And I'd like to know if there's any danger to using copper sulfate with the invertebrate status that a crayfish might have.
Yeah, great question. And that's where the copper sulfate, it's supplied at a concentration that state DEC has said this is an acceptable concentration for other wildlife to deal with. But you apply it based on the top six feet of the water, you know, you have to, you, you, it's, it's point, it's three milligrams per liter for the top six feet of the water, but the, but the water's much deeper than that. So, so that, that three milligrams per liter is the maximum that you can have, but it quickly dissolves and spreads out and dilutes and becomes much lower. So it's, the DEC has said when you apply it at that levels, it doesn't impact any other wildlife. So we're, we're in good shape there, too.
Very good. Thank you for those questions.
Sure.
Could you just clarify one thing for me? I always thought copper sulfate was a fungicide.
Well, it may be used that in some places, but here it's an algaecide. You know, it's, it's used in the water industry, copper sulfate, pentahydrate, you know, they combine it with a, you know, I think it's pentahydrate, it has.
Is it the pentahydrate that turns it into the herbicide?
That could be, because that makes it, it makes it more of a water soluble chemical that goes out into the water and disrupts, you know, any, any kind of copper material disrupts the cell dynamics of something like an algae.
Because I know copper sulfates used as a fungicide on fruit trees.
Interesting, okay.
All over, and obviously wouldn't be using if it was a herbicide.
Right, right, yeah.
So what is it? Is it the addition of the pentahyde that turns it into herbicide?
You know, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but there's different forms. And I would imagine when they're dealing with it on fruit trees, it might be more of a gaseous form that they're spraying up onto the surface. Do you, I don't know if I've seen it on, how they use it on fruit trees.
It's sprayed. It is sprayed.
Yeah, so that's a little bit different formulation, I would think, you know.
Okay. I just, I just never heard of copper sulfate as a herbicide. Any other questions?
Well, that's because it's an algaecide, right? That's how you.
Algaecide, but you know, that kind of goes into that realm of algaecide, herbicide. Algae can be put into a classification like, like a vegetative class as well. It's kind of a.
Single cell.
Yeah, single cell organism.
High school biology.
There you go. There you go.
Well, what they're trying to, they're trying to kill a plant as opposed to prevent a disease.
Right.
That's kind of what confused me. Okay. What do we need to do, Dave? Do we, do we need to vote on this? I mean, is this, or Steve, what would you suggest we do, Steve? I mean, are they still covered from our first go around?
No, I mean, this is, and I had a few conversations with the town engineering technician, Steve Wolfle, about this. And this would be a new wetlands permit. Whether or not it amends the, there are two approaches here. We could either amend their existing permit or issuing new permit. Given the, the nature of the use is different from what was submitted before, and the method of application is different, the timing of application may be different as well. We thought it was better and cleaner to handle a new wetlands permit, which I believe by town code requires a public hearing. So I think the next step would be to schedule a public hearing for the May meeting and move forward from there with a new wetlands permit.
Is this project under a different department than the Hydrella people?
We're both in Bureau of Water Supply, different sections of the Bureau of Water Supply. But, yeah, I mean, I know Meredith and Mike are the two people who come for you for the Hydrella. I, the, yeah, I wasn't expecting to have to be pushed off for another month. We were hoping to start applying in May if we had that ability. I know we got, we got to it a little late, but if that's what we need to do, then.
Do we need a public hearing to amend the original permit? That's why I asked if they're connected in department-wide, because it is sort of a very similar, while yet the chemicals are different. I get that, and the main goal is different.
I, I will say Town of Yorktown and Town of Newcastle, that's the route they're choosing to do is to modify, is to amend the existing permit.
I think that's appropriate, Gus. It was kind of six of one, half a dozen of the other in my mind, so it's.
Yeah, I mean.
So what are you saying? Amen, Steve? Amen this?
It could be, yes.
You feel comfortable doing that?
It was, I didn't feel strongly that it had to be one way or the other. There were, there were two options. And so I don't, I have a question for Joe about whether the town code requires a hearing to amend the permit or not.
Easier to follow if we amend the existing permit. Much easier to follow.
More efficient.
And then, I think, we need, we need to stay on track with notification of when it's going to happen, right? Because we have, we'll have town folk and then folks, you know, recreational standpoint with the DEP permits, using that, those bodies of water, like myself. I'd like to know when it's being applied.
So on that front, we, the way our permit system works to use our waters, you have to get your water supply permit, your email address goes into our database. We send out a blanket email, and I've already talked to our folks on that side of the aisle saying, hey, when, the month that we want to do this application, I just got to work out what the, what the email's going to say, and then they'll automatically send it out, so all the anglers will know about it.
All right, that's cool. And then you'll let us know from a town standpoint?
Absolutely, yeah.
I'm comfortable waving a public hearing.
Rest of the board?
Yeah.
Yes, I agree.
Okay, so I guess we need to motion, then make a motion that we waive the public hearing on this application and make it an extension amended to the original.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
I guess we should, we can unmute Bruce. I think he's done talking about the Mets, or maybe not. Bruce, do you have any comments? I think, we had you, we had you muted for a while because you were talking about the Mets.
I'm trying to unmute him now.
Okay.
He may still be talking about.
Yeah.
To be, to be fair, I baited him into that.
All right.
Okay.
Go ahead. Yeah, I'll vote yes.
Okay, thank you. So you're good to go with a May application.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you, Dale.
Right, thank you. Eat that water.
I guess it's coming down to you. You're all that's left in the room. Next is Volta Charging LLC site plan modifications for the installation of two EV charging stations at the Somers Common eighty Route six Baldwin Place. And what the applicant wants to do is to connect to consisting overhead, existing overhead electrical line and run conduit underground from the existing utility pole to the electrical support equipment and two EV chargers in the Somers Commons parking lot. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Patrick Fritz. I'm a due diligence. Sam Lee with Volta Charging. Sorry. Yeah, basically sums up our, the proposed plan we have, bringing in a new utility transformer from the existing overhead line, placing a power converter cabinet, and then two level-three DC fast chargers in the existing parking lot at the Somers Commons Shopping Center. Do you guys have any questions for, for us or anything?
I'm just, I was just gonna wait and hear from, from Steve and Dave, and then we'll see what our questions are, if you don't mind.
Sure. So, go ahead, Dave.
You want to go ahead?
Go ahead.
Sure, it's, it's hard. I can't, with this view, I can't see you on the cameras to know whether you're talking. Thank you, everyone, and thank you for the presentation. Our, our comments were really just around clarifying some of the, the use and the sizing of the proposed EV charging stations. I don't think that there's an issue really with number of parking spots, given this is two spots out of over a thousand in the lot. But given, you know, current adoption rates of EVs, you know, two charging stations here versus a slightly different sighting in the parking lot that might provide four or future capacity for additional charging stations that might not require additional conduit runs, making sure that you're sized for some future build out there and not just these two, and, and your comments on those would be helpful. We also just had identified that there is a, an LCD screen on these, and just understanding what the owner was intending to use that for, that directions on how to use the device. Is it additional supplemental advertising? Just some clarification on what's proposed there would be helpful.
Thank you for the question, and my name is Sam Lee. I'm the engineering project manager at Volta Charging. I'm your local representative here in New York. So to answer your question about future-proofing, that is our plan as technology changes. We're trying to run our conduit sizes larger. This was an existing project, and as we're rolling out into new technology, we are preparing, but we're still trying to move forward with the design and the plans that we have currently. If that's something, you know, we are, we typically do two kinds of installation, which is L two versus DC fast. L two is a slower trickle charge, whereas the DC fast will get you somewhere, you know, close to an eighty percent at fifty kilowatts in about two to three hours. Since that is.
Which you proposing?
The DC fast.
The fast.
Right.
What kind of?
Is it? Do we have L two here, too?
No, just DC.
Just DC.
Voltage and average do you run through those lines?
Right, so we, we run four eighty volt, three-phase, and, you know, for a PCS cabinet that, that houses two stations, we'll use a hundred seventy-five amp breaker.
Okay, so then if you wanted to add two or four more, we have to run new cables?
So the intention is, you know, moving forward, we would upsize our cables, we would upsize our conduit, try to get the utility service a little bigger so that we can come back, not have to rip everything apart. In this case, you know, strategically at every site, we are kind of considering what kind of use it is for the foot traffic that we're anticipating. And so, you know, our charge and our charging capabilities really depend on what we expect to see from consumers. So that's what's matching currently.
You know, the future's.
I'm sorry. The future, yeah, that's correct. Yeah, that's correct. And, you know, our business model is slightly different. And to talk about, you know, the purpose of our LED screens and our display is that the conventional method of EV charging is, you know, you'll have a bank of two for, as you mentioned before, EV charging and building out a network is extremely expensive. Landlords, site hosts don't want to put the money in to build out these EV stations. So it's typical for, you know, companies like Volta to come in, take the cost, install it, and hope that over, you know, five to six years or, you know, five to ten years, that the demand would be enough so that, you know, the charge for the charge would bring in the revenue. The only issue with that business model is that, right now, the typical industry average for utilization is about five percent. So if you have a company who's, you know, hoping that their charge for the charge, plus any government incentives, joint utility programs, that that's what's going to get them by, and that's just not the case, especially with, you know, what we're trying to push for in sustainability. We need to create something that's, you know, functional now, something that's going to be functional five, ten years down the line. You don't want to have EV companies come and go, disappear, leave their equipment everywhere. That's where the LED screens come in. So we do get revenue from advertisements. We also do things like community messaging, you know, we work with, you know, local, local towns like yourself. And that revenue helps offset the costs, and so our charging is actually free or subsidized to our customers. So the L two that I mentioned earlier, we plan on keeping that completely free. The, the, the capacity and the usage is low enough where Volta is comfortable and is able to offset that utility fee with the ad revenue. For our faster DC chargers, we're still able to offset the cost a little bit with the ad revenue, and that's why our prices we're anticipating will always beat the market price of our competitors.
I got a question about the LCD and the advertising. Is this similar to the LCDs that you see on newer gas pumps and gas stations? Is it that type of concept where they would be, you know, what is it, like an eight-by-eight screen that advertises coffee or something along those lines? Or whoever it is that chooses to purchase advertising?
There are a lot of similarities. Our screens are bigger than that. They're fifty-five inch screens. The purpose of it is to have it in the storefront, where pedestrians walking in and out of the store are able to see it, and, you know, that kind of visualization and impression is what brings in the.
So the fifty-five inch TV, which is pretty big.
Right, so our stations are.
Is not on the actual station.
It is on the station. So all in one combined. We have some additional equipment. We might have panels, transformers, but the station itself houses both all the equipment, the dispenser, all the controls, and the TV screen.
Fifty-five inches, like a home TV.
Yeah, but it's, it's vertical, so you're not going to see something like what we have here. It'll be vertical, and it'll be more like a sign.
How much light is that going to produce?
So that's a good question. During the day, so we do have dimming capabilities at the night. On average, we'll be running at twenty-five hundred nits. During the nighttime, we bring it down to twelve hundred nits. For comparison, something like a laptop screen is kind of measured with the same nits as our nighttime dimming. So we're not super in-your-face. We're not really obnoxious. If you, if you see some of our stations, I think you'll agree that, you know, they're really not, you know, cheesy in any way, and they're not in your face trying to grab your attention all the time.
Who's granting you permission to build these things, right? We have to do it as a town to ensure that you're up to code, but from, from the landlord perspective.
Right, so, so there are two types of business relationships that we have. We work with enterprise partners. So for example, we work with Stop and Shop a lot. So we'll have agreements with Stop and Shop. They'll tell us what they don't want advertised on it. So anything political, anything with violence, with cannabis, we wouldn't advertise that on our screens. The landlord also has to sign off on this because it is their property. So we're working with both parties if a tenant of the property is our client.
So who, so who is that? Stop and Shop?
Not in this case. So in this case, it would be the direct site host for Summers Common. UVP, yes.
Okay, and this is going to go in Jim?
Do you know?
The New York Sports Club? Are they aware of this? Do you, you guys have to get?
So, so usually there are agreements made between the tenants and the landlords, and the landlord is the one to dictate and to tell us, hey, these tenants, we have an agreement not to put anything in their part of the parking lot. Assuming, you know, now that we're at this stage, New York Sports Club does not have a problem with us.
I'm just, I'm concerned because fifty-five inches, whether vertical or horizontal, is kind of big, and it's not something that I was expecting. The gas station ones, right? They are about eight by eight, maybe twelve by twelve at the most.
Right.
And so now, you know, I mean, this, this is, we're shying away from the concept of us charging a vehicle, and we're adding some extra stuff to it now, some advertising.
Yeah, I have a.
This is signage. This has got a couple of layers here to this.
Yeah, I think we also have a code having to do with signage.
Right.
And I think they need to go before the architectural review board because they review signage.
Because I, I would consider it signage. It's digital age, twenty-first century signage, nonetheless.
To make a problem, but.
Understood.
Is that what you think, Dave?
Yeah, no, I think part of the benefit of having them, these gentlemen come in and explain what it is that they're proposing is that we had a better idea, you have a better idea of what the product is. And I think, Chris, you raised a valid point that, that it goes beyond just the function of the charging station, and now it becomes more of a, an advertisement, so it kind of crosses over into signage.
For the record, I'm not opposed to EV stations. I own an EV myself. What I'm concerned about is the architectural review board process, this being considered signage, and then some residents of the town objecting to a large advertising digital screen in a parking lot that could be visible from Route six, or, you know, I mean, we definitely, I think we need to have a public hearing on this, right?
I think they'd have, I think they still have to go before ARB first. I think they have to go there first, and I think what they're gonna, I don't, I can't speak for them. I bet they're going to ask you to tell them about someplace where you have this existing, so they can take a look at it, be my guess.
I was going to ask a question. Is there a web site or a YouTube link where we can actually watch one of these facilities in action?
Most definitely.
With real people and real cars and real, we get to.
Real time.
Yeah.
Yeah. Sean?
Actual videos. We do have demos of our employees using our stations at our headquarters, so.
I'm saying something online, a website or a YouTube link, where we can actually watch it from home.
Yes, most likely. Volta, we can also provide videos of us doing the same demo, just, just, just because I don't know what the public has uploaded, and it's not on our website.
You don't have one anywhere around here, do you, existing?
I believe the closest is in Dobbs Ferry.
That's not that far.
So we do have stations there. I also would like to add the point that, you know, unlike the, the gas station pumps, which are smaller. So we do have stations there. I also would like to add the point that, you know, unlike the the gas station pumps, which are smaller, we don't have any dynamic displays, so they're completely static. We have an eight, a maximum, sorry, a minimum of an eight second refresh. So it's not distracting drivers. It's not flipping all the time constantly. There's no flashing of the lights. There's also no sound. So they're just static images just laying on the station. And, you know, in towns, we have had certain towns deemed that, you know, it does not apply under the signage ordinances, only because it was accessory to our equipment. And, you know, EV charging and EV stations haven't really been defined in many codes and in many towns. That's the approach some have taken. In other towns, we've worked with them to amend the text, text amendments or variances. And, you know, those are things that have.
I don't want to put Joe on the spot, but if if he's zooming with us, maybe he could give a rendering on what he thinks if this was could be considered signage. You know, you don't have to answer now, but just, you know, at some point in time.
Hey, John.
Yes.
Am I?
Yes, go ahead.
No, we hear you.
We hear you.
Okay, you're not talking about one 55 inch screen. You're talking about there's two stations and each station, if I'm not mistaken, has two charging sets, two, two sets per charging station. So you're talking about four screens that are 55 inches. That is, that's a lot of, that's a lot of visual distraction. And I mean, that that almost classifies, I mean, it does classify as a major advertising you know, billboard. So that 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 could be very disturbing. I I I thought, like Chris said, they were going to be the size of what's at it at a gas station. But 55 inches, four of them, that's a lot of space.
Is it four?
Right. So it is double sided. The only the only correction I'd like to make is that each station has one dispenser. So it's not four charging stations per per kiosk. It is one. But yes, it is double sided.
So that's. I was. At 55. I was familiar with with another charging station that had two, two stations per per location. That's that's got to go to the architectural review board.
Is that your feeling too?
Yeah, that would be that based on the discussion here, be my recommendation to have them go to the ARB and have them.
I I I agree with that too, just from a, you know, pure kind of reading of the code. I think it's significant enough. It is. It's not strictly speaking related to the site. But it's on the site and there are signage limitations and, you know, signage oversight of that should be looked at.
If I could just add one more thing, our intention is never to have any offsite drivers or pedestrian CR stations. They're located at the storefront so that it wouldn't be visible from Route 202 or, you know, just any major intersection. Be also the the idea behind this is that our typical competitors are investing anywhere from $500,000, easily 700,000 to a million per site with 5% utilization. They're not really making any money. And so.
I recognize that. I'm not going to argue your business model, right? But I've got residents in the town that we that we, you know, we have concerns about that they may object to the idea of having four 55 inch, I'm assuming you said LCD, right? LCD screens that are on 24/7 showing advertising. That's that's my only concern. And I think it's a valid concern. I think judging by the nods on the board, I think that's we're in agreement with that. So I understand that. I don't use superchargers all that often. I charge at home. Right? And so I get that. And again, as someone who has been on the environment, energy environment committee for the town and has been a proponent of alternate green methods of, of, you know, energy, I'm all for the EV stations. But I have a concern about about this other part of the model, which I recognize is for you to recoup that revenue that you're not getting with the 95% of people that are charging from home, right? It's got to go. I think it's got to go in front of the ARB. I'm not, I don't like the idea of these signs being so big. Do you have any model where they're smaller?
No, we have one size.
I I think the best thing we can direct you tonight, even I'm listening to our our attorney. I think he concurs with what, if I'm reading this board right, with the majority of the board thinks, I think you really need to get on the ARB agenda and and see what they have. Because irregardless of how we feel, I think you're still going to need to be signed off from them.
Yeah, and if they give the blessing, then then we'll look more in depth at your EV plan now and where it's going to go. You 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 said storefront, but with the way I recall looking at the plan, I believe that you're across the road where the parking is opposite the gym. Right? There's like an island there in between? Or or am I, did I read it incorrectly?
Yeah, directly across the drive aisle from the gym on the island.
Right. So that's not in front of the store.
That is our typical, I do apologize. I didn't mean to.
Clarify that.
Right.
Because like I said, where where, you know, that's not saying that you were intentionally misleading, but it could be misleading to someone who's watching at home, you know, with COVID, people watch from home now. And so in their idea, it's going to be in front of the gym. And hey, they already got a sign. They already got big windows. Who cares? But it's not. It's it's across from that, really.
It's in the parking lot.
Kind of in the middle of the parking lot, where, you know, again, I think that this this really needs to be looked at, the 55 inches. I don't want to beat that.
I think I think that's the best direction we can give you tonight. I I.
One other question, slightly off topic. How is this 55 inch screen made secure? How does it withstand the elements? How are these? And I would, what regularity are these stations maintained? What does what goes into the ongoing keeping it in good condition? Qualities, because I think that's also inherited when you're looking at signage and and the overall impact, visual impact and and that's going to have the community.
Right. That's that's a great question. And so because we are putting in the investment of putting our stations in the ground, it's in our best interest to maintain them. So we do have field service ops members who are constantly running around to different sites, debugging any issues, whether it's software or hardware. You know, in regards to the elements, our stations are rated for NEMA 3R, so it is rated for outdoor use. And for security, we do have firewalls so that we can't easily be hacked. And, you know, different, you know, media content is put up there without.
Don't want unfortunate Zoom bombing or whatever.
Exactly.
To appear.
So you so you're able to remotely monitor the status of these stations? It doesn't require someone to do a physical inspection every 30 days?
Correct.
So you'll know in real time if there's a problem offline, or if there's a problem with the LCD sign.
Right. There are some problems, like, for example, if if someone breaks the screen, that might not immediately show up on our system just because it's completely physical. But our users who use them typically do submit tickets to us. So that gets processed very quickly and taken care of.
Yeah, because I mean, that's that's a valid point, Mickey. It's like, you know, I I've used some of these stations and I wonder how often they get looked at, you know, especially some of the older ones. So that's a very good question.
Any other questions? There's Steve or Dave, any comments for anyone else? And, you know, I don't don't take this as a, you know, super negative from the board, but like Chris said, you know, we represent all the all the towns folks too. And I can see them, you know, a 55 inch screen is pretty big. If you had said 5.5, I don't think there'd be any problem at all, but.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I mean, even if it was on 24/7, you know, I don't think anybody would complain, but I I'm envisioning, you know, Times Square, Las Vegas scenario with these big, you know, with these big LCD signs that have advertising on it. That's not, that's not the bucolic nature of Somers.
I think if we could see one.
It might be helpful.
That, yeah.
And the ARB is equipped to deal with it, not us.
Yeah.
Right.
That is their value.
Because it involves advertising, you really have to go ARB.
Yeah, understood.
If you could give us a location, you've mentioned Dobbs Ferry, just so that if somebody has the opportunity, they could check that out.
Definitely. Who would be the best contact person to?
Coordinate through the planning office.
Okay.
Okay.
We're about to move on construction on one of these similar sites in Carmel. It's not constructed yet, but.
Okay.
That's closer yet.
Yeah.
So we'll also send, you know, I I have some videos of stations. You guys can take a look at that as well. I have some renderings, some kind of eye level view of what a pedestrian or driver might see, just so you can see that it's it's really not in the way. We'll submit all of that for your for your review.
And I would suggest bring all that with you, including the locations, existing locations, when you do get on the ARB agenda. If you call the plane office tomorrow, they can give you times for the next meeting to get on their on their schedule.
Historically, they've asked to see samples of what the signs look like. So it may move you to be prepared for that.
If you have a video that shows one in action, that might be a good idea to bring.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you again. Any other or remember comments? Want to continue the conversation about the Mets or probably?
Well, it was a long game.
Our next meeting is Wednesday, May 11th, 2022. Make a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Thank you very much.